I'd like to call to order the Linmar School Board meeting at 5:00 in the boardroom here. Can you please determine a quorum?
Buckholz, Eisenberg.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Maury.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Wall.
Here.
And Weaver.
Here.
Quorum is present at 5:00.
Okay.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda with the walk-in exhibit.
Clark and Kara, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Okay, um, is there anyone going to speak tonight? Okay, would you please make sure your name's down there? And I have this little blurb I have to say to you, so I'll be doing that while you sign in. At this time, the board invites the public to speak on items related to the agenda or the district. The board will receive and acknowledge comments but will not engage in a dialogue with the speaker because of the set agenda for the meeting. Remarks are limited to three minutes per speaker. Remarks should not contain names or other identifying information about students, teachers, administrators, or other personnel. That would be the end. So you are?
I'm Matt Rullinger. I have two children in the Linmar School District. Although I have literally dozens of documented instances of administrators, board members, and faculty of Linmar not performing their duties, according to policy and law, I'm only going to highlight one today because of the time limit. A few weeks ago, I requested oaths, contracts, oaths or contracts, and bonds for several employees of Linmar. I received an email back from an administrator in writing that says, quote, "The district has no records responsive to your request for oaths or bonds of employment." I simply replied to that administrator with a screenshot of Linmar Policy 805.1 that clearly states, "All other employees shall be covered by a blanket bond in the amount of $150,000." Guess what? I got that bond. And I got those contracts for those employees. We're being lied to constantly. The reason I ask for those bonds and those contracts is because we are being lied to constantly. We're being lied to, we're being told things that are misrepresentative, and I want to be clear here that I am not threatening, nor have I ever threatened, anyone, but I am putting every single one of you and every Linmar employee on notice. I will hold each one of you accountable to your bond. Every single state employee has a bond. And when I asked that administrator, I'm fairly certain they knew that when I asked for it, but yet I was lied to. So when your decisions are made, you might want to think twice about the ramifications of those decisions. Are they legal? Do they violate anyone's rights? I tried to remedy this situation a year ago with administration personally, and nothing got done. In fact, it got worse. These things have, I cannot even begin to tell you some of the things that have been done. State law has been broken. Federal law has been broken. But, I'm not here just to highlight mistakes. I have resolutions. I have a couple of options. One, simply fix it. Do your jobs. If you can't do that, number two, resign. If you can't perform your duties as you were hired to or elected to, step down. Again, I'm not threatening anything. I'm simply stating, I'm going to hold every single one of you accountable for your decisions. It might be a good idea to convey this.
Time.
No, that is not time.
Okay.
I went through this several times, and it is well under three minutes.
I timed it three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We will move on then. Informative?
I, we are paying for these seats. I've got one more minute here. I want to say this.
The three minutes were up.
Three minutes are up.
Again.
Marion City Council report, do we have anything for the 17th?
Hold on, I didn't get my thank you. The President?
Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank me for my comments, not for coming. Just as it says in policy.
Okay, I thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
How's that? Do you have anything to say for the eighth? Tell us your saga of what happened.
Oh, the Marion City Council, yes. And I will preclude this with, I don't know if they knew I was coming or not, but went to the back door, it was locked. Went to the front door, it was locked. And I called one of the council people and said, well, they had their thing with lawn, and that lasted till 4:30 or 5:00. So it wasn't because I was coming that the doors were locked, but it was the celebration that they had on Thursday, and so therefore there was, anything that went on, went on with Tuesday, but, so there's nothing to report for, other than the fact that I was there. I called Sonja to make sure that I was doing my due diligence.
I wanted you to know I tried to be here. So, thank you, Clark.
I did June 17.
Oh, okay. You're off the hook, Tim. Tim, I think you must be the next one.
Tim was over here making up all this great stuff.
I know. He just wanted to go, what was it about?
Well, I pulled two things out. They made a move on the roundabout at Echo Hill and Albernet Roads, but I had talked to Shannon on that, and it's still like a ways out from breaking ground. And so, it sounds like at this point, we just need to hope that it doesn't happen during the school year.
Yeah, the last time we talked to him was a couple months ago about that topic, and originally we're scheduled to be done this summer, and then they had said they're going to delay it until next summer. I've got an exact timeline on that, but we're hoping we can coordinate that with end of the school year before the following school year.
Then, the other thing I had was, there was a final plot approval north of Echo Hill Road and west of Albernet Road for 24 additional homes.
Okay, thank you. Onto IASB legislative priorities. You all got copies of this before, and there were things available, and having looked at these, there are so many that seem important. It's just trying to weed through them and try to figure out specifically. Tim made a comment earlier that we always tend to kind of say the same ones because they're really important, they have to do with funding, but we don't ever seem to really get much action on it. So I don't know if that means we want to continue with that, or if we want to take a different route, or... So at this point, if you wouldn't mind, when you're referring to like ones that you think are important, you can maybe say what is, an example, say preschool, and it's on page one, and down in the bottom right-hand corner is your page number. So maybe we can each kind of follow where we're at, and, you know, that kind of thing. So, does anyone want to start with something that they think is important? Maybe we can kind of go around?
I made a list of four.
Okay.
Because I knew we were supposed to be trying to get it down to four, so I tried to...
Correct, four is the one we give some of it.
So, page three, teacher recruitment and licensure. There's just been a lot of hits of like, let's lowering the qualifications because of the teacher shortage, and I don't necessarily think that while it solves an immediate need, it doesn't secure the quality educators we need in the long term. So I think that, for me, was one. The second, one I wrote down, school funding, page four, school funding slash state aid, obviously, continuing to advocate for that. The third one I wrote down on page five, local accountability and decision-making. We all know why. And the last one was also on page five, expanding educational opportunities.
Yeah, those are some of the same ones I thought of.
Well, I thought a lot of it was important.
Yeah, I know.
Those were the four that, after reading it, you know, for the 12th time, those were the four that kind of jumped out, who we're going to focus on. So that's, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Tim?
Oh, I actually like a couple of those you put there, but I had, I had four too. I had mental health on page two, which I know we've had before, but still with what's happened this past year, I think that would be good. I had school calendar on number two, on page two as well. Just something a little different, kind of maybe what you were thinking. I kept SSA in there on page four, and then I put homeschool reporting on number six, page six, something different too. Looking for something a little different that maybe some small wins that we could get. But, so, I kind of like your...
Are there some that you, that jumped out at you?
There was some overlap there. I want to point out early literacy as one.
Yeah, I saw that one.
You know, this is something that we talk about a lot, and, you know, there's been some changes to curriculum, but I guess, for me, I always go back to that idea that reading really is fundamental, that like, reading is tied to your success in every other subject, and so the more that we, the more funds we really pour into looking at the science of it and teaching around that, I don't know. I don't know, this just jumped out to me.
That's on page one.
That's on page one, sorry.
That's okay. That's, that's fine. Kara, were some that stood out for you?
I had marked the ones that Britt had said, for the most part. I would like to make sure that special ed is represented. I know that it's on there every year, but if we just stop, I mean, that is a huge deficit for us, and for everybody year over year, so.
Really nice.
Otherwise, I definitely think, like, the licensure issue, and then local accountability and decision-making also. I had more than four started, so sorry.
Yeah, I know, so did I. I tried to go back and just circle four, but then it was kind of like a half circle. It's like putting up an A+ or something.
Yeah, you can't pick all of them, right?
Clark, what were you thinking?
Well, I think everybody's covered almost all the ones that I had, and I'm still concerned about the supplemental state aid, and that goes along with what Kara was saying in relationship with special education and stuff like that. We have, since we, since I've been on, it just seems to get worse as far as the state supporting us year in and year out, and it's becoming to the point where it's getting monumental. And it's not just our district, it's every district around, and, you know, I think the legislature's ignoring it way too long, and I think we need to make sure that those students are taken care of.
Can I, can I just add one thing?
Sure.
I would, I hope that we, like, diversify a little bit. I would hate all of those, or the majority of those, to be, I know that funding is important, but I would hate for like, all of our, you know what I mean, our four to be funding focused.
For sure.
So, I'm...
It would be nice. I, do you, when you go to the delegate assembly, do you discuss the wording, or do you just pick from their list, and that's what they do?
Well, they kind of pick it apart some, too. Some people, depends on who's there, but, some people kind of pick it apart, clear down to its ads, you know, that kind of thing, and so...
It would just be nice if school funding policy, if the conversation actually was about fixing formulas and looking at how aid is, you know, instead of just, oh, well, we have this weird system that only Iowa uses, and we can't go against it, so we're just going to do this calculation, and we all know special ed is constantly underfunded, and everyone's got a deficit, but we're not actually going to fix it. It would be nice if the priority could reflect the actual problem, and not just say, we need funding. Like, that, I don't know if there's a place for that comment to be made in the delegation, but that would be...
Could you take that to Jim Green?
Yeah. That would be mine. And the only reason I didn't put mental health higher is because it actually did get funding passed this year, and, so I was kind of hoping we could, could other things, but...
You can, I mean, and Sonja corrected me too, but you can change the wording on here? It does happen, but you also have small, you know, little bitty, small districts, and then you have like us that'll be talking. So, yeah, we can always try to tweak the language and take it up, and that's not a bad idea, it's just something we haven't done in the past.
Yeah, when you just, you have to fill out like a report, you have to submit it, and then it gets...
Voted on.
Yeah, voted on.
Yeah.
Bring it forward, and then, and then, you know, so, I mean, it's a process, doesn't mean you can't do it. And if there's something that's important, it's kind of one of those things to kind of go at the beginning of the time, talk to those people who are in charge, say, okay, I need to do this, where do I go, and who do I talk to, and, and then bring it forth so that when it comes time to discuss that, that you're able to do it.
I was just curious, because it would seem that if we could actually have a conversation about a priority that addresses the actual problem, then we might feel differently about the same four things getting brought up every year, and we don't feel like progress is being made, but...
The thing you ought to know, though, there's not a huge discussion thing, it's more of a just, you propose it in a different way, and it's accepted or not, so I didn't want you to get the wrong idea.
Oh, no, I had a very kind of thought. I figured how it was going to go, but I wanted to at least ask the question.
Doesn't mean we can't try to change it, it just means it's kind of, you know...
Well, and even if it's not, even if like, as a delegation, the funding policies say that one's one voted in by all the representatives, doesn't mean that when Margaret starts talking to legislators, she can't say, this is what we mean.
Good, that's a good point.
And remember, remember the, we take our top four, but then everybody votes.
Everybody else votes on their own top four.
Yeah, and so it's a whole, we get so many votes with each size.
But then our top four, I do use those as legislators' individual conversations with them, it's also more Linmar specific, even if our top four don't arise to the state level top four, it's still good talking points to share with individuals, too. I took a little bit different look at it this year than I have normally, too, just kind of the same reasons of, it feels like after a while, that echo chamber just doesn't really go anywhere. So a couple of these are similar, but dropout at risk is probably the only one I had on my list that you guys didn't mention. I just think that's one that we're underfunded compared to other schools in Iowa, and I think that needs to be, it got a little bit of traction this year in the legislature, but I don't know if it had the chance to continue it or not. And I have mental health, teacher recruitment, licensure, and then supplemental state aid, trying to balance a bit of the funding with the other needs, I think, out there as well. I was trying to take notes as you guys were talking, and obviously not everybody voted for exactly, but the ones I heard repeated more than once were mental health, teacher recruitment and licensure, supplemental state aid, local accountability. But a couple people said, well, I was thinking what they were thinking also, so I may have not been able to match up exactly with everybody.
Well, now you only have one down there for funding, right?
I think school funding policy encompasses more...
You have just, you have just SSA.
That's kind of what I, you talk about school funding policy.
You know, maybe we should, like, maybe we should swap out one and do another funding piece, whether that's...
What was your question about, where you're talking about school?
Sorry.
Which one would be more encompassing?
The description under school funding policy seems to be more encompassing of multiple areas, like it talks about special ed funding, it talks about equalizing per pupil funding. It just might, like, just choosing school funding policy might encompass a couple of the other funding ones that we had...
Yeah. It seems like it just has more meat to it, is kind of what I thought, too.
Well, that's, that's with regard to the school funding formula, right? So that's, that's toward like tweaking the formula versus just asking for straight aid. So I think they're, those sound pretty different.
Different than state supplemental, or supplemental state aid, for sure.
Are you saying, are you saying like doing that instead of like the special ed?
Like English language learners, special education, some of the like specific programs that might be...
Well, I mean, the funding formula is very inequitable, so, I mean, we talk about that.
Well, the second bullet says equalizes per pupil funding, so if we made a suggestion of, this is where special ed should factor in, and this is where, you know, those other special population groups should go under that bullet, then we kind of give some of our three other priorities can go to other areas if we suggest that we add those special populations to bullet two.
And it says reflects actual costs for special education services in that section also.
Yeah, so at least that way we're talking about that, because, so that sounds like, it's definitely a school funding policy.
Those two, I mean, if you're going to do two and two, like two funding and two other, then those two seem like good...
So SSA and the school funding policy. I, I had started that local accountability and decision-making one, and also, what was it, expanding educational opportunities, I read through that, and I thought that was kind of interesting.
Can I ask a question about the local accountability and decision-making?
Sure.
This one always makes me a little bit nervous, because, you know, it can go in the other direction as well. Sometimes we feel like, sometimes we may feel like they don't step in enough on certain things where they, and it may not be this district, but think about how it may affect other districts. I mean, giving, I'm just saying that, that walks a fine line, and I think we should, before we like jump on that and, and kind of ride that, ride that wave, we should really think about what, what the potential downsides of that could be. Because I can think of, you know, I can think of a few off the top of my head, yeah.
Well, I know that one was on my list, but I can totally play devil's advocate and say, that's not going to go anywhere with this session, so let's put a priority somewhere else.
I do want to buy that too, from a what's realistic perspective.
And I'm much more of a, let's get done what we can get done, so I'm totally fine with taking that one off the list for this year and saying, let's focus on something else, because it's probably not going to make.
Under governance, then, I think probably expanding educational opportunities are more achievable.
Well, now that says investment, investment in magnet and innovation schools, and that makes me leery.
The second bullet says, under the direction of the locally elected public school board.
So it's kind of like what we've done with, say, with Wilkins and with Bowman. I mean, it's just kind of, because it also says, they're more of the innovation schools.
We're going to advocate for the establishment of charter schools under the direction of the locally elected school board?
And I thought they, they already addressed that this year, so we want to put that as one of our top four.
So I don't know, but the next, on the last page?
I don't want to advocate for that.
That next, yeah, I know, but the next...
The difference there is it mentions under the local, the locally elected school board.
I know, but I still think that's real, yeah, that's what they tell you to make you feel warm and fuzzy about it.
On the last paragraph, it talks about, it says opposes the use of additional taxpayer funds for the creation of vouchers or educational savings accounts, or an increase in tax credits or deductions directed toward non-public schools.
I, I think that anything...
I think we're just opening up a...
I think it's opening up a can of worms, I wouldn't do it.
And I can be persuaded that way as well, and in listening, I could definitely get behind early literacy or the dropout at-risk funding, because those are both foundational
Well, and I wonder, to your point, if, if the legislature has really approved some mental health funding, it's unlikely that they're going to approve additional funding this year, so why don't we perhaps not do that one and take up a couple of these other ones you guys have talked about?
Yeah, I like the teacher recruitment and licensure.
Yes, for sure, definitely on that.
We've said that's a competitive advantage for us.
Yes.
And it is a need area in the family market across the state.
So what if we do school funding, teacher recruitment, licensure, and then the dropout at-risk, early literacy ones?
No, because we're going to do two funding ones.
So we do...
Funding and two other.
Oh, we are going to do supplemental aid as well?
Yes.
Okay. Then, Shannon, from your perspective as the administrator, do we need more support for our dropout at-risk students, or for early literacy in our district?
Yes to both.
You have another one that you're looking at?
We could do five, Shannon.
We can't do five, they won't even let us add a fifth one anymore.
Didn't we try to do that last year?
They have taken us out of that.
They're going to take us out, they're going to let us come back.
You send in five, they write down the first four, and they drop that last one, so you have to be really careful what you put there.
The dropout at-risk is implied in the school funding policy piece, but I don't think it specifically mentions that. As far as equalizing per pupil funding, that would be an area, because schools in Iowa don't get the same funding in that category.
That could be that special population add-on to the second bullet that we could suggest, and then we could focus on early literacy.
Correct, that could be one of the subcategories there, so that would allow early literacy to be addressed as our other specific one.
Is there something else that you are thinking?
So you said early literacy, so I...
Yeah, I think because the dropout at-risk is implied in the school funding policy one as well, so I think we can, the other one, the only other thing I would say is the mental health piece would be the one that's still considered.
I know, that's the one that I always worry about.
I think they have made some traction on that, and they are saying they're committed to expanding those resources as well, so I make sure it doesn't drop off the radar of them thinking, oh, it's no longer a need, when it clearly is a need.
I can think of, okay, so the Ivy School Counsel Association, that will be a top priority that they push. Please Pass the Love is going to push that, so there will be lots of people pushing mental health, and it doesn't mean that we don't support it. As soon as those come up, we can say, we support, we support that, but it doesn't have to be on our primary list, because we know it's going to be on these other organizations' primary list. That's, I mean, that's just another perspective that we could consider.
Well, that's important. Anybody with another comment?
No, I think, I think that the way that she stated it, Britt stated it, makes sense, and then that way, our counseling staff knows that we are being supportive and know that it's going to be brought up anyhow. And on the early literacy, you know, I am supporting that simply because I, we can't forget what happened last year, and all that, everybody being behind, and, you know, we definitely need to emphasize that, and those that are behind, get them caught up as soon as we can, and that is an integral part of the whole learning process, no matter what subject matter they're taking.
That's a really good point, because the presentation that we saw from Nathan indicated that, like, especially with early literacy, there was a major impact from this last calendar year, so.
Yeah, it's hard to argue with early literacy. That's definitely a need area, always, but this year especially. So if I'm hearing right, so the four that I think I'm hearing everybody say would be early literacy, teacher recruitment, licensure, supplemental state aid, and school funding policy, is that...
And we can come up with, like, some suggested consideration language for those special populations, and you can take that into the room with you, and they'll accept it or not.
That's true.
But at least you'll have it in your hand.
Yeah, that's true. Whoever wants to do that.
You could go into the room too, with her, just because I've done it a couple...
I'm just not, I'm not making any assumptions, it's only July.
Yeah, Britt, you can, when you take it into the room.
Yeah, so you go, you can do what you all go for.
If you want me to take it into the room, I will take it into the room and then talk more than they want me to. As you all know, I can.
Well, I've, I've been in there, and yeah, it's, it's an eye-opening experience to go through all that.
Well, I will do it if, if everyone wants me to.
You go for it. Absolutely. It's great, thank you.
We will get those submitted.
All right, now, I've got so many papers here. Get to where we need to be. Okay, oh, we're to Shannon. Updates, please.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll update this time just because of the time of the year, school's not in session, obviously, but first thing I'd like to start off was just condolences to the Jarmillo family and the tragic accident that happened in, in DuBois a week or so ago. Just can't imagine the tragic situation they're going through, and our appreciation to our staff and our emergency teams to help support those individuals that need counseling and support, and that's just something that, if there is any positives in these tough times, it's good to see people rise up and support each other in that piece as well, so, I just can't imagine that, so, tough to see in our Linmar community have that happen. Two other just updates for you as well, return to learn plans. I've mentioned this to you a little bit, the guidance has gotten a little bit clearer as far as what we need to submit for this upcoming school year. As part of the ESSR plan for the federal government, schools are required to do essentially three things as part of their return to learn plans, and they're pretty broad, and it's interesting, because every school across the country is a little bit different spot, and a lot of states are a very different spot than Iowa. Some schools haven't even been back in session yet in person, so their return to learn plans are going to look a little bit different than ours. But what we need to do is, by August 23rd, we have to have our plan updated and posted on our website, and also give a chance for our community to give some feedback and input to us as well. And then, after that point, those plans have to be implemented with one other contingency as far as how we would ensure continuity of services in the event that school is disrupted or interrupted again. It's kind of the other component that we have to, to include. So, just got that guidance a week and a half or so ago, I've been working on it in cabinet, spend more time with it tomorrow as well. So we plan to bring an updated version to the board for our August 9th meeting for consideration. Our plans will look very different than they did a year ago, very different situation, different guidance as well, so we'll continue to refine those, I'll share updates with you, and then hopefully the August 9th meeting, we can either have more in-depth conversation, and hopefully approval for that night as well. I think what you'll see is a definite focus more on returning to normal as much as possible, still with some considerations for us to look at, and things to keep in mind from a safety perspective, but without a doubt, definitely more of a return to normal than our return to learn plans we had last year at the start of the year. I'm open to input from board members as far as what you'd like to see or not seeing those plans. Once we get a little farther along with the draft this Tuesday, hopefully, I can share with you in this week's memo some kind of updated versions of what we're looking at as well, like your input as we get kind of through this process too. So same name, but look very different this year, if that makes sense, so. Any thoughts, comments, questions you have on that topic? It's a loaded topic still, obviously, as we try to work through.
I'm just interested, I'm getting a lot of inquiries from parents about the intermediate elementary buildings because they can't get vaccinated yet. So there's a lot of concern and questions, so I'll just be interested to hear what the guidance is and then what we put together for that.
Yeah, we've talked about that a little bit too, that we have obviously a very different situation at the elementary and part of the intermediate buildings versus our secondary buildings where vaccination is an option for those students. So we debated, how does that look at the different levels? Is it separate plans? Is it just different modifications we make? Yet to be determined.
I have, I have no suggestions, I'm just curious as to what you're going to put forth and then we can talk about it.
Yep. Other thoughts, ideas? I was like, trying to get you an update on this week's memo as far as what we're looking at consideration for first drafts anyway.
You think of something, contact Shannon.
Please do, honestly.
I know I will.
The other thing too, just to kind of get on your radar, I'll put a reminder in this week's memo as well, just looking to schedule individual board meeting, coming to conversations with me between now and the start of the school year. I think it's a good time to just touch base on just things in general and then specific things as we approach the start of a school year, just to stay connected, give you a chance to ask questions, share your thoughts you may have as well. So I will be reaching out to you in the course of the next couple of weeks to do that, or you can reach out to Gala as well to get those scheduled, so. Other than that, that's the only updates I had for this time.
Are we still going to do a communication on the vaccinations with this new variant? It's kind of thrown a clog into how the nation was going and even how the state of Iowa was going, then all of a sudden, boom. There's been not a whole lot of good things being said about that, except for the, it's just more highly contagious. Is there any way that we can kind of keep those communications like we did it last year as kind of, as a precautionary thing to, hey, let's, you know, we've got, we have a good thing going, let's try and keep it going, try and get everybody, because percentages for even 12 to 18-year-olds is not the greatest. And they are, have the ability to get vaccinated. I just wondered, throw that out there to see if we still need to kind of communicate those things before school instead of having something happen after we get started type of thing.
Yeah, I think there's definitely things we can do to help communicate where things are at and just transparency with the public as well, especially as we start, as we approach the start of the year, get closer to it, there's definitely things we can put out there as reminders and still waiting for a little bit of guidance from the DE. We'll link County Public Health too to see if they're going to have any clear direction for us. Haven't seen much yet, so I'm kind of curious if that'll be part of the messaging we can use going forward then too.
Hopefully, maybe by the first of August, someone in there will get something that we can put out on the website.
Yeah, I think we will.
Yeah.
And then I guess another question would be with the discussions now about the booster shots, will we offer those clinics to the same people that, you know, we offered the vaccination clinics in the schools and for staff? Will we offer a similar program for the booster six months out or something to think about?
Yeah, there's a lot of information we would need on that front yet to determine.
Well, yeah, I mean, they're just now starting to talk about the need for one, so if it all comes together and they do recommend that, would we be able to put something together that would help those that wanted it?
Yeah, work with our community partners again like we did last time for those that are interested.
That just made it a lot easier for a lot of people if they knew that they could just come in and get it done.
Yep.
Anything else?
Nope, not for me.
Okay. We're going to unfinished business. Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the resolution directing the sale of approximately $29 million in school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue refunding bonds, Series 2021, to the best and most favorable bid received from Huntington Securities, Chicago, Illinois.
For your second, I can, the motion needs to be modified just slightly a little bit since we did the sale, we actually know the amount. It's actually $26,865,000.
Hold on a second, say it again, 26 million.
Eight sixty-five.
Eight sixty-five, okay. Can I amend my motion?
Sure.
Okay, so should I just read it over again? Okay, I'd like to amend my motion. I make a motion to approve the resolution directing the sale of approximately $26,865,000 in school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue refunding bonds, Series 2021, to the best and most favorable bid received from Huntington Securities, Chicago, Illinois.
Okay. Okay, yeah, thank you. Is there anything you'd like to say about it, JT?
Yes, and I apologize for.
It's fine.
Obviously, we didn't know the amounts because we actually had the bids today this afternoon, so. And you have this four-page packet in front of you, I'll just highlight this quickly. Matt Gillespie would normally be here, but there was three other bond issues that he sold today, so he knew that we were seasoned in this, so. Not being here. But anyway, the first page is just the detailed bid results. We had seven banks bid on these bonds, which is a very large number. As we just mentioned, Huntington Securities Incorporated at a Chicago was the low bid at a total interest cost of 1.59%. So again, a very good bid. The second page of this packet just really lists the bidders in order of total interest cost. And the third page is really the meat of what the board's probably most interested in. So I apologize for the, the small print, actually, you can blame Matt. Again, he's not here, so you can blame him. This is his exhibit, but basically, the top of that page, those first four colored boxes, those are the current bond issuance that we have, those are the ones that are being refinanced. The one below in the green, that's the new issuance, so that's the 26,865 that we just talked about. But the big number that you're going to be interested is where that arrow is, and I did enhance that so that you could actually see that. With this bond refinance.
Where is it, JT?
With the bond refinance, we're saving about $1.9 million.
Wow.
Which is, it's a significant savings. So that's about right where we kind of projected it, I think we were in that $1.8 million range, so we were a little bit better than what we thought, but the market was good still. So kind of the last page of this packet really is the schedule, the bond timeline. We did the sale today, you're going to approve, or you're going to direct the sale here in a second. And then what we have left in August is all the kind of the legal resolutions, you know, the tax certification, things of that nature. So that'll happen at the August 9th meeting and then the actual transaction will close August 24th. So that's all I have to inform you about tonight. If there are any questions, I'm happy to. Otherwise, we're going to have a lot of roll call votes here coming up.
I was just going to say, the rest of the ones that are coming have to do with the same thing, so.
Yep.
I'll just say, well done, 1.9.
Yeah.
Pick a good time. Yep.
Save us some money, thank you. Okay, so now we need to have a roll call on 501.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Maury.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
And Weaver.
Yes.
Okay, Keres.
Make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the redemption of outstanding school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2012, dated October 1st, 2012, of the Linmar Community School District, State of Iowa, and directing notice to be given.
Okay. Okay, so motion by Rachel, seconded by Kara. Roll call, please.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Maury.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
And Weaver.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the redemption of outstanding school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2013, dated June 4th, 2013, of the Linmar Community School District, State of Iowa, and directing notice to be given.
Second, Kara. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Lawson.
Yes.
Maury.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the redemption of outstanding school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2014E, dated October 21st, 2014, of the Linmar Community School District, State of Iowa, and directing notice to be given.
Second?
Okay.
Okay, Brit. Can we please have a roll call?
Maury.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Keres. Okay, 505.
Make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the redemption of outstanding school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2020, dated May 5th, 2020, of the Linmar Community School District, State of Iowa, and directing notice to be given.
Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Maury.
Yes.
Keres.
Really good at that.
Okay.
I was just. And I was just reading it off.
You were doing well. Okay, we're on to new business. First reading.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of the policy recommendations as presented.
Second.
Clark, any questions about this or comments, anybody?
Yeah, I'll say I can do a quick jump into this was policy recommendations that came up after our last policy committee meeting had taken place for the school year, but something with our nurses that the recommendation made sense just to align with our new building layout structure with intermediate buildings being added in there. Once they looked at that grade level change, there were some, just some wording things that were adjusted as well, but the primary change is the, just to match the grade levels to our buildings and what they thought was age appropriate for that, so. So that's why it's off-cycle from other policy committee meetings. I appreciate our policy committee members providing feedback via email, so I'm trying to call another email or another meeting with that.
Well, especially after what we've gone through this last year and having these updates, I think is crucial to having those placed where they need to be, especially.
Sounds good. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, pass it.
Make a motion to approve the open enrollment request as presented.
Second.
Any questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Keres.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the walk-in exhibit.
Second.
I have a question about one of the contracts. The Edmentum contract, is that our total enrollment? The 43 active learners in the 22 elementary?
Correct. After all the registration process with everything that is the number we ended up at.
That was my, that was my only question.
Yep. It ended up being, we weren't really sure this first year what that would be. It's obviously significantly less than we had this past year for online learning, so but still glad we were able to offer it to those families that need that service, so.
I'm interested to see how it goes.
Agreed.
From a distance this year though, Arthur is going back to school.
As far as hiring, are we, you think, are we there, are we halfway there? I know there'll always be things that will come up.
In general for hiring?
In general, yeah.
Yeah, I'd say we're way past the halfway point just to the wrapping things up stage now. Ends up happening is just to be a lot of dominos as one teacher moves from one position to another, that just takes a while to get things finished up. But I think the last couple of board meetings, you've seen a lot of personnel listings here and we're getting closer to the end of that, but we're not there yet.
I just had one on the Wilkins roof project, is that over the gym? That was leaking so badly the day I was in there and it was running down the wall to number 47 or whatever, so hopefully.
That's not the gym, no.
Uh-oh, hopefully that got taken care of.
I was going to say, that was the cafeteria.
Yeah, this is the cafeteria.
To the direction of the.
Yes, that's right, because there was a humongous hole there.
Yep.
Water running down the walls after that too, so.
Yeah.
Well, the roof over the gym is still under warranty, so. Your dry space or whomever's been there to hopefully find it and fix it, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, let's see, oh, we need to accept everything. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, so we have to that. We're to the communications, are there any communications that people would like to say?
Previously volunteered for the August 5th city council meeting and I can't do it anymore, so if someone would please take that from me.
I'll take that.
Otherwise, I can read the notes afterwards, I just can't physically go.
Are they open?
If the doors are open, I'll be there.
I'll go, I'll go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'll go, if you don't mind. I've been waiting for them to open the doors.